Okay. We will call to order the public hearing scheduled for 5:45 for the purpose of receiving public input regarding a $37 million appropriation and bond authorization for Roberto Clemente International Dual Language School Expansion Project as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. If you wish to address this board on this topic, I ask that you sign up with our City Sheriff Steve Conway. Please state your name and address for the record. You'll have a five-minute time limit, and I will give you a one-minute warning. Mr. Conway?
Yeah, first speaker tonight from 79 Guile Street, Shaila Chico.
Hello, my name is Shaila. I first want to start off by expressing my heartfelt appreciation-
Sorry, just your address too, I'm sorry.
Oh, Shaila, 79 Guile Street.
Okay.
I want to express my heartfelt appreciation for RDLS. I'm deeply grateful for the way my child's school has become more than just a place of learning. It's a second home where curiosity is sparked, kindness is encouraged, and every child is truly seen. The passion of the teachers and the thoughtful guidance of the staff have helped my child grow, not just in knowledge, but in confidence and character. The support, encouragement, and sense of community makes a lasting impact. It's rare to find a school that balances warmth and excellence so well, and I feel incredibly fortunate to be a part of this community. Thank you.
Next speaker from 809 Woodtick Road, Nanichi Rodriguez.
Good evening. My name is Nanichi Rodriguez, Waterbury's 2025 Teacher of the Year, and above all, a proud teacher at Roberto Clemente International Dual Language School. Every day, I have the privilege of watching our students grow, not just learning two languages, but becoming proud of who they are and where they come from, and of cultures that shape them. Expanding our program through eighth grade means giving our children the time they need to become truly bilingual, bilingual, and ready to take on the world. It means opening doors to advanced placement courses, to the seal of biliteracy, and to future where they can be confident leaders in our global society. Research tells us, and reflecting on our own data over the years, our students show us through their growth. The steady progress we see across language and math remind us that dual-language education provides a strong foundation for academic excellence across subjects. Our school brings together families from all across Waterbury, and that unite, and what unite us is our belief in the power of language, culture, and community. I ask for your support so we can continue creating these meaningful opportunities our students so deeply deserve. Thank you.
Next speaker from 925 Oronok Road, Kirla Figueroa.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Karina Figueroa. I live on 925 Oronok Road in Waterbury. I'm here today as a proud parent and a strong supporter of the expansion of Roberto Clemente International Dual Language School. This is not just about adding grades, it's about investing in the future of our children and our community. Roberto Clemente has proven constantly that it's a place where students thrive academically, culturally, and emotionally. The dual-language curriculum gives our children the gift of bilingualism, a skill that opens doors and supports cultural identity. Families who attend this school do so with pride, knowing their children are receiving an education that is connected to their heritage. But as the school continues to grow, so does the need for appropriate facilities. A new expanded building will create a healthier environment for students and staff alike. Improved aged-back ventilation and modern infrastructure will provide students with an environment conducive to learning. Our students learn better, and our teachers are empowered to do their best work in an environment that reflects an excellence they strive for every day. This expansion will give our children the chance to continue in a place where they already feel safe and successful. It is a natural step and one step that our community is ready for. Thank you very much for your time and considering this meaningful investment in our children's future. So I have written testimonies of other families supporting the expansion with me. Will the Board President accept them?
Sure. Go ahead, right to the young lady right there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker from 153 Mansfield Avenue, Teresa Reed.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Teresa Reed, 153 Mansfield Avenue in Waterbury. I sit on the steering committee at Roberto Clemente International School. My daughter is Perry. She attends the school and will be entering the third grade in 2025, 2026 school year. Extending the school to the eighth grade is near and dear to my heart, as it will continue, as it will contribute to the consistency for my child and all the other children who were promised by literacy education. I am asking you to send a strong message to the children that they are important, their education, and the promise of pre-K through eighth-grade bilinguacy school here in Waterbury is important, both yes to our community school, yes to our children, yes to the parents, and yes to extending Roberto Clemente International Dual Language School. Thank you.
Next speaker from 4 Shelter Street, Nicole Francita.
My name is Nichelle Franciatt, Nichelle Franciatt, American, French, friendship, you can say it any way you want. Many people know my faces since I was young.
Just your address, just your address too, I'm sorry.
Oh, my address is 4 Shelter Street in Waterbury, Connecticut, 06705.
Thank you.
I did plan on writing things down, but any of you who are on the board know my life, I just don't have time. But I did rehearse it in my mind many times, and the school going up to eighth grade is very dear to my heart for the simple fact that, number one, that was the number-one goal when opening up the school in 2019, last I checked. That was the goal, and that was the plan when my daughter started, my daughter's going into the first grade. She's not here with us today because she was very tired from the heat, but she loves, she loves the school. And I'm gonna tell you that what my daughter, what my daughter has learned from pre-K through kindergarten, there are sixth graders and seventh graders and eighth graders that have not learned what she has learned in kindergarten, in kindergarten, period, that are walking in Waterbury, Connecticut. And so, just her recollection of the little bit of things that she knows, I think it's important for our children to go through, not only up to fifth grade, and learn through the social-emotional skills that they need to go through, but then go through sixth to eighth grade and see what they are supposed to learn through sixth to eighth grade, and get that Spanish, English learning with the social-emotional skills that they're supposed to have at that time. Because them, if they were to go through fifth grade and graduate to a reg, and go to a regular, regular middle school that we have here in Waterbury Public Schools or private schools, it's not gonna be equivalent, it's not gonna follow along with the education that they've been getting up until fifth grade. They're gonna go backwards. Then what are they gonna be? They're gonna be bored. I don't wanna do this. I got kids right now. I got a 12-year-old, and I got an 18-year-old. I've seen them bored. We all have kids of our own. Do we not see kids when they're bored? What do they do? I don't wanna do this. So what are they gonna do? They're gonna fall backwards. So, yes, I stand for Roberto Clemente to go as far as they can go. If not eighth grade, go all the way to high school if they could, if the funds are possible. Because this, this is not for nothing. My family does not come from here. I come from immigrants. In every other world, every other country, from babies, they learn two languages. Canada, they learn two languages. Mexico, my aunt was born in Jamaica, she teaches English to the Spanish kids in Mexico. This is the only country where we only speak and learn English by choice. So this is a blessing to have Roberto Clemente School. And so if we can have one school here in Waterbury and have it go all the way up to as far as we can possibly go, I say yes to Roberto Clemente as far as we can go. Whether funds, I, listen, last I checked, it was 80 million, whatever, I don't know what it was, but it was 80, and now it's down to 37. I don't know. I don't know if it was half, I don't care if it was half, I don't care how it do it, but it needs to go up to eighth grade, because that was the original plan. I don't know how you're gonna do it, but it needs to happen, in my eyes. Thank you.
Next speaker from 413 Harpers Ferry Road, Paul Condes.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. My name is Paul Condes. I reside at 413 Harpers Ferry Road. Before I get tarred and feathered for my remarks tonight, let me state that I am 100% in favor of providing whatever we need for our children's education in the city of Waterbury. My problem and my concerns, I stated at the last meeting, is the process. Approximately 15 months ago, 18 months ago, we had a presentation here, and we were told that the ideal situation for these children at Roberto Clemente would be an $82 million addition to the school. I wasn't happy with that number, and I was even more unhappy because we are leaving a church that's gonna fall down, and I'll tell you that in a minute, and a rectory. I went up there the other day, the roof is cupped, the roof is cracked, the roof is starting to leak on the church. I put my son's drone up there. I'm not a structural engineer, I'm not a roofing contractor. You don't need to be to see a missing shingle, or a cracked shingle, or a cup shingle, and lines are black in the roof where it's starting to leak. So I would have liked to have seen that presentation offer us the option of getting that church, and getting that rectory, and getting it at a very, very reasonable price of a dollar. Because we have done so much work, and we purchased so many properties from Hartford, it's time for them to possibly want to get some great publicity, especially with the new Archbishop. They would make wonderful headlines, them donating those two buildings to us, so we can knock them down and make that campus one campus for our students at Roberto Clemente. I don't like the idea of even putting $37.5 million into a building that sits next to a church that is getting ready to fall down soon. Because once it starts deteriorating like it is now, it quickly deteriorates. We all know that. And a rectory is doing the same. Okay? So again, I have concerns about the process. Now, this board, along with the mayor's support, I was sitting here at the meeting, voted it down, the $82 million or whatever it was, and I agreed. Now, we are five days away from the application gonna be presented, because there's a timeframe and a time limit. And two weeks ago, we get a presentation, and I'll be very honest with you, I thought the presentation was weak. I would have liked to have seen a comparison of what the great $82 million plan was against the now-great, wonderful, what-we-need $37.5 million plan. I would like to see the differences. I went back, I pulled out both presentations, and I gotta tell you something, it was very difficult to do that, but I did. And at the end of the day, whether we would have spent over $80 million or this $37 million, we're still gonna end up putting on an addition to an extremely old building with a decrepit church and a decrepit rectory next to it. They could be knocked down, a ball field could be put in place, a basketball court, change the plans, but we can't do that now, because we are rushed. We're four days away from the deadline, and this public hearing, of course, everyone here is gonna support it, including myself. It's the right thing to do for our students. But this is not the process that I'm used to having here in these chambers. I'm used to seeing the process have much more time, okay? We're gonna have a public hearing, and we're gonna have a vote tonight.
One minute.
Thank you. And then we're gonna have the application sent in on Friday. I do not think that's fair to the public, I don't think it's fair to the taxpayers, I don't think it's fair to the students, because I still don't know what the ideal number is. If for some reason, and it won't be, it was voted down tonight at $37.5 million, would the next proposal be $22.5 million? At what point do I know what the right number is and what the right plan is? You know, proper planning always equates to perfect execution. I don't see that in this particular project. I've always supported anything that we do for the youth of our city, for the students of our city, okay? Because that's our job as parents, as taxpayers, to ensure they get a better education than we do, they get a better chance at life than we do, okay? But this particular project, I am not happy, I think we rushed it, and I don't think that's fair to anybody. Thank you.
Next speaker from 29 Ponham Street, Jessica Carrero.
Jessica Carrero, 29 Ponham Street, Waterbury.
Try to speak into that mic.
Can you hear me?
Try that.
Jessica Carrero, 29 Ponham Street, Waterbury. So, it's hard to go after all of the points that he just presented. You know, I definitely see those concerns, but as far as the school itself and what it does for our children and brings to the community, I think that it's a very special school for many reasons. I often refer to it as a community school because of the involvement of all the educators. Not only is it a place where they learn two languages, but they're also, they're also developing a sense of pride in their culture and their community, and also, you know, being made aware of different opportunities that are afforded when you're bilingual. So it is something that I've noticed in my own daughter, her participation has increased a lot as far as, you know, culturally, within our family, within the awareness. And I think having those role models in school is something that is really important, especially now, whether you get your news from Facebook, from the paper, wherever it is, there's a lot of cases where kids are just lost and doing a lot of, you know, mischief, or crimes, or craziness. And expanding to eighth grade allows the kids to be in an environment that is safe and familiar, and have more influence from the educators, from, you know, the, not only the lessons that they're learning in school, but the conversations. The school has so many events regularly for the community and the parents to participate in, that it really gets us all involved. And I think that buy-in where there's cohesiveness between the school, the children, and the parents, I think it's important. I think Waterbury needs that. I think that Waterbury needs more in, more schools like Roberto Clemente, but also we need to have more influence over, you know, our children at such a young age, and I think that the school really does do that. You know, my daughter wrote a book report, I'm sorry for sharing something, but she wrote a book report about her hero, and she wrote about one of her, her school counselor. You know, the school has great staff, the education there is great, and the overall atmosphere is great. And I think that when we signed on to this, I knew it was a big commitment, because they said you have to keep your kid there until eighth grade. And so that's what we were planning on. And now to hear that, you know, whether they have to move, I mean, I would hate for them to move location, but whether it's a different building, I think that the school should continue on, because it's making a difference in the lives of so many children in Waterbury, and I think it's, it's very much needed. That's it.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing. And we will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen for Monday, June 23rd, 2025. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge Allegiance in a silent prayer, and I ask that you keep in your prayers tonight the family of Lorraine Mills. Lorraine Mills was a member of the Bully Manor Neighbor Association. She was a terrific lady, she loved the city, and there wasn't a function in the city that you went to where Lorraine didn't seem to be there, so hopefully you keep her in your prayers. Thank you. Roll call. Alderman.
Here.
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 Present.
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 Here.
Here. Okay, we have a quorum. Next item on the agenda would be public speaking. If you wish to address this board, I ask that you sign up with our City Sheriff Steve Conway. Please state your name and address for the record. You'll have a five-minute time limit, and I will give you a one-minute warning. Thank you.
First speaker tonight from 1400 Mearden Road, Martin Spring.
Martin Spring, 1400 Mearden Road. I didn't really get a chance to speak on a Roberto Clemente public hearing, and it's only because I don't have enough information on it, otherwise I would have spoke about this. But if it's gonna be something positive for the city, I would recommend that we support that. But we gotta remember, there's a lot of new immigrants in the city of Waterbury, there's a lot of different languages and culture in the city. So we have to put that in consideration when voting. Okay, there's a few things I wanted to say, because my sister lives in Watertown, and there's a dilemma over here with, Waterbury wants to collect over $34 million in water sewer fees and for legal battles. And over here, it says in another article, it said, "Waterbury judgment contested." Now, she has well water, she doesn't have regular water, and so, my brother-in-law's also a combat Vietnam veteran, they bought the house over there quite a long time ago to live out in the boon docks, if you will. So I don't know if this is gonna pertain to her and her family, and I do have my cousin who lives out there too, so I understand, we have to get this rectified, and I commend the mayor and his administration, and everybody else, especially Corporation Council, and everybody else that's working on this. Okay, I had some other things I did want to mention, it's on the Board of Aldermen's agenda, and I already marked them down. Here's for Michael LeBlanc, number 13, requesting approval of information on the cost of police-fire department response and lease information for former St. Mary's School and sacred high priorities. I spoke to Michael about this, and according to what he's telling me, it's a good situation for us to be involved with, and I think it's something we should move forward. And I know the Board of Public Works Directors- There's another thing on item eighteen, and requesting approval amendment under two thousand twenty-three A R P A Auto Theft and Violence Grant Agreement extending to performance end date of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. That's something I would support if I was on the Board of Aldermen. On number nineteen, Robert T. Davis, Deputy Chief, Waterbury Police Department, requesting approval of Connecticut grant for municipal police department for aggressive enforcement of speed and aggressive driving laws, which department transportation provide reimbursement. I know everybody would support that because I know when I'm driving down the road, there's a lot of aggressive driving, people going through red lights and everything, so that's something I would support. I don't really have a lot of time, but I did have this, I brought up this before. Also, we have quite a few out of town, hold on a minute, I got to go back, I'm sorry, I had the beginning, I got to start, I apologize for that. Several plazas around Waterbury have not only blight and severe potholes and ruts as well. I already know the city government doesn't have much authority when it comes down to enforcement. As many of you know, most businesses either lease or have an LLC, which is limited liability company attached to its true responsibilities, especially when it comes to repairs on blighted buildings and lots. Also, we now have quite a few out-of-town property ownerships through LLCs. So how can we make things right and rectify this for everyone's best interests, especially for people's individual rights as private, you know, business owners? Have a citywide ordinance put in place, include the Corporation Council, the mayor and his entire administration, members of the Board of Aldermen, and local appointed commissioners, and so we can work with the community leaders and create an ordinance with some teeth in it. I don't know if we have that, I don't know if we went through the charter revision yet, but I know there's a lot of property owners out there, and there's a lot of blighted areas, especially in the plazas. So I would recommend that members of the Board of Aldermen, which I know each and every one of you, in the seventy-first, seventy-second, seventy-third, seventy-fourth district.
One minute.
Thank you, Mr. President, to go around and you'll see the blighted areas, the buildings falling apart, the broken glass, the litter, the blight, all over the place. I mean, we want to make Waterbury a better place to live. There's a lot of people here today, and I appreciate, and all the young kids coming out and everybody else, I appreciate everybody being here, but, you know, we all got to work together to make Waterbury a better place, regardless of where we came from or what we're going to do, but we got to be very positive on the things we're going to move forward for the city of Waterbury. Again, I applaud all members of the Board of Aldermen, and I was just hoping you'd take my advice, and, you know, what I just mentioned, is do what you can to make things right for the city of Waterbury, for all its citizens. Thank you.
Next speaker from four thirteen Harpers Ferry Road, Paul Condes.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. My name is Paul Condes, I reside at four thirteen Harpers Ferry Road. Let me turn this way, so you can see the other side of my face before I make my remarks. I am here to speak about item number four, requesting approval of a thirty-seven million dollar capital appropriation and bond authorization for Roberto Clemente International Dual-Language School Expansion Project. This is something that needs to be done, we are under time constraints, regardless of my previous remarks, we need to support this expansion, we need to support this bond authorization, and we need to do it quickly and get it in so that we can get this project done. Thank you.
Next speaker from forty-five Pierce Street, Sharon L. Samoska.
Good evening, and I thank you for the opportunity to be here and to speak, Sharon Samoska, forty-five Pierce Street. I have a concern over Waterbury Hospital, a rather big one. We must and absolutely have to have continuity of care that's reliable, dependable, and patient and health-oriented, not dollar sign-oriented for shareholders. We know there are legal issues involved, the facility is to be sold at auction, and apparently they're selling things now. This week, or last week, Senator Murphy on June thirteenth posted that he was asking for patient and family testimony for a report he is compiling regarding, quote, "private equity and profit-seeking in healthcare," which I totally support, having worked in healthcare for most of my life. I do not believe testimonies of patients or related persons should be prevented by Prospect Medical. Proper healthcare and practices must be up to standards. Information is readily available for years on the issues at the hospital. In my own experience, this for-profit business did not provide best standards and necessary level of care. Nonprofit hospitals in our region do much better. The use of funds of Prospect Medical was called into question many times. Deborah Waymouth, president and CEO of Prospect Medical Holdings in Connecticut, quote, "respectfully disagrees with Senator Murphy's decision to launch a campaign inviting the public to share stories about Prospect Medical Holdings at a time when our focus must remain on stabilizing care and securing a strong future for our hospitals." I ask her what hospitals and stabilizing where, because Prospect Medical did not do a good job. I do not believe in our nation of free speech and equality and best practices that Senator Murphy should be forced to remove this portion of his report based upon the fact that Prospect Medical is facing legal issues. The life of every patient in a hospital is the core and the only core central to care. I ask that our city support what Senator Murphy is doing, it's vital to prevent something like this happening again. Nogatuck Valley Project, EJ ordinances, we still have no resolution, we're still waiting for that. I see on tonight's agenda, under unfinished business, again, the notice about the ordinance that was to be amended or changed for the W E C C. I ask that that continue to be placed on hold until dialogue has occurred. Kinney Town Dam in Ansonia, which is not far from us, it's on the river, it's being taken down, it's in disrepair, it is pretty messy. Residents complain of obnoxious odors, deaths of fish perishing, trying to get by the dam leading to predator involvement. Trash in the area has brought rats and mosquitoes, there's sediment emitting methane, and a collected significant amount of sewage. Where did the sewage come from? The problem is very complex and costly. How will this affect Waterbury? When spills have occurred here, obviously that's affected that dam. What happens now with the changes in EPA regulations? Is our plant going to operate differently, and I think we need answers to that? Will we see now fish able to move up our river? What a joy that would be to see salmon running again. What do we need to consider in our own area, in our own plant, to make this situation the best it can be? In regard to the plant, I spoke to Rick last week, after almost two weeks of very uncomfortable odors at my home, to the point where I couldn't even keep my windows open, and walking outside made me choke. I don't understand what was going on. I am impressed and grateful that there is a twenty-four hour, twenty-four hour a day, seven-day-a-week phone number available to report odors. My question is, you report them on a weekend, but what happens? Does someone come out, or is that tabled until Monday? Within a few hours after my call last week.
One minute.
Rick said he was already searching for answers, as he had many calls. Shortly after my call, it stopped. I have shared the information about weekends, going up Baldwin Avenue Saturday and Sunday mornings, it still stinks. I don't know why it's always Saturday and Sunday. I moved here thirty years ago, I couldn't even have a barbecue in my backyard or invite people. Now, in two thousand twenty-five, I've been able to at least garden outside, sit outside, and many of the wildlife critters have returned. I don't want to go back to horrible, and I hope and I pray that Rick can work on this and come up with answers. The only other thing I would ask is on Highland Avenue between Bristol Street and going down toward Nogatuck, it is a horrible, horrible pothole because of all the constructions that they're doing. There's also a tree that's falling down over the road. If someone could please look into that, I would appreciate it. Meantime, I'll advocate for us to remember, as we file petitions and look at what our representatives are saying, remember those people who have worked so hard, they need social security, they need Medicaid, they need Medicare. Let's support them, because without them, there will be no support for our city or our nation. Thank you.
That's the last speaker, Mr. President.
Okay. With that, the next item on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes from the Monday, June ninth, two thousand twenty-five, regular meeting and public hearing. Alderman Martinez-McCarthy, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderwoman Weaver.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? See none, all those in favor of approving the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the minutes are approved. Before we go into our business, we're going to, you have in front of you a, a application for a U.S. Department of Justice grant for community policing development. It's time-sensitive, that's why it had to be added, the application actually has to be in by June thirtieth, so we're looking to add item number twenty, looking to add to our agenda, we'll make it item number twenty, and it would go to intergovernmental. Alderman Martinez-McCarthy, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderwoman Weaver.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Alderman Alsop.
Yes, I'd just like to make a point, I tried to make a presentation, or I made a presentation last meeting, and I was told, why are you waiting till the last minute? Well, you know, here we are getting a multiple this year, and I find it a little insulting that the rest of us don't have the privilege, or at least I don't have the privilege, of bringing something up without great notices, but we can look at these things and have to make decisions. I'm not at all against this, I'm against it being put on my table at five-thirty for me to see, to vote on.
It was, Alderman Alsop, it was also sent to you in your email on Wednesday, last Wednesday, to look at it also, so.
I did not intend to look at it, I apologize.
And we share the same frustrations as you, but when there's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars on the line possibly for the Waterbury Police Department to make the city, and it's a time-sensitive, that's why we're doing it. That's the only reason we're doing it, it's because it's time-sensitive. Further discussion? Alderman Alsop, further discussion?
No, my only point is, work planning is an emergency.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
Thank you for representing. Just want to point out for number twenty, is this a grant?
It's application for a grant.
For a grant?
Yes.
With no cost to the city?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Here are none, all those in favor of adding the Department of Justice Community Policing Development grant application to the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and item twenty is added, and it will be taken up by intergovernmental. Before we recess into committees, we're going to take old business one, three, and four up as a committee of the whole. So with that, next item on the agenda would be to resolve ourselves into a committee of the whole. Alderman Martinez-McCarthy, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderwoman Weaver. Motion made in second, any discussion? Here are none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we are sitting as a committee of the whole. Unfinished business, item number one, is requesting approval of the repeal of ordinances governing dormant boards and commissions and amendments to related ordinances submitted by Mayor Paul K. Pernaruski, Jr. Alderman Martinez-McCarthy, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderwoman Weaver.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Here are none, all those in favor of approving unfinished business, item number one, signify by saying yes, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and unfinished business, number one is approved. Unfinished business, number three, is requesting approval of a lease agreement with Nogatuck Valley Council of Governments for one exchange place, units six A and six B, as submitted by Michael Blank, Director of Finance. Alderman Martinez-McCarthy, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderwoman Weaver.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Alderman Alsop.
Yes, I believe we're going to tell them to be on the floor.
Is your, is your mic on, Alderman Alsop? I can't hear you.
Was. They're getting a heck of a deal down there, because a few of the people I talked to that know something about the downtown rental rates, we were told eleven dollars a square foot. I was told it was much more than that. So I can't approve this, given them much less while we're spending the money we are.
Mayor.
Alderman Alsop, I would just ask you, what's the basis for your analysis of what the proper square footage would be, that someone you spoke to?
I was told fifteen to seventeen dollars a square foot.
I know what you were told, but I'm asking, who told you?
I'm not in the real estate business, sir, I have to talk to people who are, and I did talk to people who are.
Do you have anything that you can present to us?
If you need me to come in here with affidavits and stuff like that the next time, say that to me so I know that ahead of time.
Well, I just, I think if you're going to come here and you're going to say that we're giving them a heck of a deal, we're giving the store away, you ought to have something you can present that supports that.
Sir, you're not going to discredit me, because if you pick up the phone and call real estate agents to do it, you'll find the same answers I got.
We've done all of that with all of the same people, and we've come to, what is it, twelve dollars?
I mean, I could get fifty people that I know that could tell me it's a hundred dollars a square foot.
Well, that's the point.
That's not what I'm doing. I went to people who knew. If you don't believe me, that's fine, my credibility's shot, that's up to you, I don't care. I don't come in here unloaded, I come in here with the right information.
Where's the, where's the analysis? Who did you talk to? What did you do? That's what I'm asking.
Several different.
You keep saying several people, but that's not a...
Who did you talk to? How many people did you go to? You didn't give me that information either, sir.
The analysis is in there, right? In the package we gave them? I mean, we put it all in there, Jack, we do the same, we focus this. What the market rate is, what the negotiated numbers are.
I talked to three different real estate agents that are familiar with it, and I got anywhere between fifteen, seventeen dollars easily, is what I was told.
So we were able to access several leases for downtown property, and the rate that is contemplating this lease at twelve dollars a square foot is right in line with those leases. Additionally, this is a triple-net lease structure, so the tenant will be paying for all of their proportionate utility costs associated with the lease, and additionally, there's a two percent escalator in each year of the lease beginning after year one.
Okay. I'll remember to rent from your people if I have to do something. I won't go to the people that I try to rent from, that I talk to.
But did you, did you see any leases that were fifteen to seventeen dollars a square foot?
Pardon?
Did you see any leases? Did anyone point?
No, I didn't take, I didn't take a day to go around and read leases and do things like that. I called people and took them for their word.
I understand, but what I'm saying is, we went through the process of looking at what's actually being charged in the market, what are current leases that are out there in the market? For a triple-net lease such as this, where everything is on the tenant, all of the costs for this are on the tenant for maintaining it, so that's what we took a look at. In addition, with the escalator that's built in. So I get that you talked to people who may have told you fifteen to seventeen dollars, are they triple-net leases, are there actually tenants that are paying that in downtown Waterbury? That's the only question I'm asking. We've seen real leases that have those numbers in it. That's the market that we're looking.
How, how are we dividing the utilities there? Do we have separate heating units for each tenant? Or is it a single?
Don't forget, those floors were all separately owned at one point, so each unit is separately metered at this, yes, that's exactly right.
So every unit has its own heat, air conditioning unit? I know they can meter it with the electricity.
They've all got their own meters that they were paying, yes.
For the electricity?
Mm-hmm.
And it's all electric? Or do they have gas heat or oil heat?
What's the heating system?
Gas.
It's gassy, so they're charged the gas, they're paying the utilities?
Yes, it's a decent amount of heating here, it would be based on proportion of square feet.
Right, so it's either, some of them maybe, it's based on the square feet, but they're all paying their share of what the gas cost is. We're not paying the gas, we are paying the gas because we're keeping most of the building for the next two years, so we'll be paying those costs. But each of the building, it's allocated among the size of the building.
So you're charging them, backcharging them per square foot?
Correct. Also, for the common area maintenance, all of those things are being rolled into the square foot it's charged, they're getting. Plus, they're paying, you know, their own, their own utilities.
But please understand this, I wouldn't come here and say fifteen to seventeen dollars an hour unless I did some research and found that out.
I understand, but that sounds like, you know, a huge differential, but what I'm saying is, you haven't actually seen a lease that has that number in it, and you don't know whether the triple-net lease is or any of the information in the background, so it's not apples, oranges at this point. So if you want to come and say we're not, we're not being good stewards, we're not doing due diligence, that's fine, but I'm going to point out the fact that here's what we have, and here's what you're saying, and this is where the discrepancy lies.
And you just said twelve dollars a square foot. The last time I asked, it was eleven dollars a square foot, so.
Twelve dollars a square foot.
Okay, so that's a dollar a square foot more than what I was...
You have the lease in front of you.
Sir, I'm just saying, I asked the last time when it came up, and I said, what is the square foot cost, and I was told eleven dollars. And I was told $11.
I didn't tell you $11.
I'm sorry, whoever it was was standing at that podium.
All right, I'm just, I'm sorry, I just...
I mean, we can go back, that's something we can go back, even you can go back and check on.
But the fact is, you have the document in front of you that says $12 a square foot.
Further discussion? Alderman Mosley.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. President, uh, thank you for recognition. I know that when this project was first, um, announced, that there was concern about getting tenants, and it looks like we're getting tenants, and I, I think that we should definitely support this. Um, I will be voting in favor of it, and I encourage my colleagues to do so as well.
Alderman James.
Thank you for, thank you for recognizing, uh, Mr. President. Actually, as a real estate agent, I'm in my system for MLS. On Bank Street, there's rentals that are a business for a unit, 1,000 square feet for 1,200 bucks, so I feel like this is right in line with what the downtown is going for. That's just one of many that I'm looking at, so, it is about 11 to 12 bucks.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving unfinished business, item number three, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Okay, let's do a roll call.
No.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and unfinished business, item number three is passed. Item number four, is requesting an approval of a $37 million capital appropriation and bond authorization for Roberto Clemente International Duolanguage School Expansion Project, as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. Alderman Martinez-McCarthy, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderwoman Weaver.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Uh, Alderman Rodriguez.
Sanyone? Thank you, thank you for coming, uh, appreciate it. Um, I know this, uh, is an important, uh, subject, about the $37 million, but I want to make sure that this money is going to be spent right for the citizens of Waterbury and for the kids that are going to this school. Uh, my, my biggest question is, um, the architects, so we're not going to find any surprises after we start doing this, uh, construction. And I'm saying this because I know a lot of times, we, uh, we start doing construction and we find that we need more money for this construction. Just want to make sure, because I know citizens are concerned, it's a, it's a big amount of money, uh, that we, I know 80% will be done by the state, uh, and we have like 7.7 million that we're going to be, uh, doing, but still, it's a, it's a big chunk of money. So we have, all the architects find no issues with, uh, getting more done, spent in this project.
Uh, thank, thank you for the question, Darren Schwartz, Superintendent, Waterbury Public Schools. Um, I can't guarantee that they won't find anything, but that's why you're building contingency in the projects. And so, uh, what they have done is they have, uh, we've had our architects go out, and they have, uh, committed that the convent is structurally sound, and so in terms of the structural and, uh, the engineering behind it, it is sound. Uh, and when we get in there and start doing, uh, the, uh, major renovations, obviously we'll take all the precautions necessary. Good news is, is that in the convent, there are no students, and there won't be students while we do the construction. Um, there will be, uh, small additions, uh, built on to the current school, and there's also going to be, uh, HVAC and a new roof on the current school. So when you go in and do the HVAC, uh, that would be done when students are, uh, not in the building, it would be done, uh, during second shift times and times that, that students aren't, um, in the building. And so, again, if there are things that are found, it would be done, uh, during times where students aren't present.
If we found any issues, if we found any issues after, whose, uh, the price tag will go to the city, or we could ask the state for more funding, uh, after we found any issues with the property?
That one's a harder question, so I'll ask Mr. Albinie to answer.
Yeah.
Good evening, Nick Albinie, Chief Operating Officer, and thank you for the questions, Alderman. Um, when, when you say, um, we will have any surprises, anytime you do a renovation, you open up yourself to some type of a problem. We don't know about asbestos in the convent, we don't know about lead, we don't know underground when we excavate. Um, these are things that you don't do now until you're approved. We don't know the size of the sewer line, is it adequate? Is it a four inch, is it a six inch? Does it have to be upgraded? It has sewer, but is it adequate? Waterline, is it adequate? These are some of the things that we don't know until we get in. And then the other unknown that always is out there is, are the estimates by the contractors going to come in what your estimator thinks they are? So going through quite a bit of, um, projects over the past couple of years, um, escalating prices do come in, uh, this will be prevailing wage, so the, the workers will be getting, you know, um, fair, fair wages, that, but that's all part of the, of the bond, I want you to know that. If we find some unknowns, we would be able to go back to the state and justify how we could not see this, and hope that that would be part of that 79.89% reimbursement.
So, and I, I just want to make clear, uh, that when we got to this number of 37.5, um, architects already looked at the property, looked at everyone, everything that is, has to be done to come up to that number without having any other issues.
I think what you need to understand is, the architects have looked at it conceptually, that this will work to do it, but what I think, uh, Mr. Albinie's talking about is, once you get into, you've got to actually get the engineers in and the designers to design the actual construction. That's part of what this money will pay for. So the, conceptually, this works, but what's in the building, what are the, the lines and the rest of the things that are going to happen, as you start to put the plans and the specs together, that's what this money will pay for initially, and then ultimately the construction. So, that's why these things remain as unknown, so.
Yeah, and, don't get me wrong, I just, probably they, they asked me, they really said about the question is, uh, hopefully the state would help us out in that, uh, in that project to kind of pitch in and the extras that we find.
Right.
I just want to make sure that the state is, uh, aware that we are...
We do true-ups with these projects as we go through with the end, you know, with, with funding and the rest of it. So it, we, we would have to go back and apply, obviously, uh, to see that it was available, but at that point, we'd go back and do the application. As long as the changes aren't things that we've come in and suddenly redesigned that are not eligible for reimbursement, but that, I don't see that happening in this case.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. President.
Further discussion? Alderman Tajaldean.
Thank you. So I just have a couple of questions. Um, so when, when you presented to us at our last meeting, you provided a, a list of items that are also part of this purchase, right? I want to make clear that this is not $37 million worth of, like, lumber and roof, but it's also to outfit the art classroom, the science classroom, the music classroom. Um, this allows us to purchase at, uh, you know, within a short amount of time, or whatever time it takes, to outfit the entire concept, right?
Yes, that is correct. It is, uh, completely outfit from middle school science classes, which are unique, obviously, the art rooms, you know, the new gymnasium would be built, that would also come with equipment opportunities, desks, uh, everything that we would need to make it functional, uh, day one.
Yep, yep. Um, and I, I think Mr. Albinie might have said this a minute ago, but i- in the construction of this, there won't be disruption for learning for any of the students that are currently enrolled, because we're building the upper classrooms that aren't enrolled at the time, right?
Yeah, the only disruption would be, uh, is in two years' time, uh, we would have sixth grade in that building, and it would be tight, we'd have some minor disruption in terms of maybe some, some possible specials, classrooms, music might have to visit, uh, instead of being in one location for one year, it may need to, you know, move around a little bit. Those are discussions that we would have with, uh, the principal and the assistant superintendent, identify exactly what those minor disruptions could be, but basically, that would be, that would be the, the biggest disruption we would anticipate.
And, 'cause I know it was sort of mentioned earlier, the timing of this, so if, if for whatever reason, we weren't to do this now, that would create a more significant disruption within a year, right?
Correct, and, and it just, just for, you know, coming up to the timeline, just understand that walking in, uh, a little less than a year ago, as interim superintendent, um, I was, uh, faced with that $81 million project and tasked with going back, and we've had several meetings with the Board of Education and the Building Committee and Board of Education, uh, and their workshops and regular meetings to go over, uh, these changes, and hence the, the June application. However, following that process, we were able to reconceive, and the big difference is, the former presentation wasn't using the convent as an opportunity to expand, and this, what you have in front of you is using the convent to expand this to eighth grade.
Okay. And my, my last question, um, which is sort of, I'll preface it by saying it's a little bit to the side of the construction of the school, but what are the plans for staffing going forward? Because I know, we talk all the time about teacher retention and recruitment, and what are the efforts that you're putting in place to make sure that, when it's ready to go, we've got the, the best teachers there?
That's a, that's a great question. Well, I'd, I'd like to argue we do have some of the best teachers there right now, and I, I can say that, because a lot of them are sitting behind me.
Yep. I meant for the new, the new grades that we don't have there yet.
Understood. So it's actually a special model, right? Because you, uh, at many of the grades, obviously, the vast majority of our teachers, uh, are bilingual at this school. Um, so there was some concern in the beginning that would they be pulling from other schools to kind of fill up the slots? And the good news is, is that we've been able, under the leadership of the assistant superintendent, Juan Mendoza and his team, we've really been able to close the gap of vacancies with bilingual vacancies. We are actually under 10 now in the whole district, which is, you know, it was, it was almost triple that at one point. And so, um, yeah, so the, the, the school seems to continue to operate. We definitely, I would like to think that, um, from, since I've, uh, since, uh, since the school's been created, um, I don't, I can't remember a teacher wanting to leave the school, um, to go to another school and transfer out. Uh, it is a highly sought-after school to teach, and, um, you can understand why, it's got a unique program and a unique model, and so, uh, I, I think we're able to balance creating the opportunities for teachers that are bilingual to be able to go to the international, Roberto Clemente International Duolanguage School, while at the same time, uh, filling what we need in the rest of the district in terms of our bilingual programming.
Great, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Further discussion? Alderman Mosley.
Yes, thank you for recognition, Mr. President. I just want to take a moment to, um, applaud the Roberto Clemente International School community, uh, for coming out. Um, not often do we get to hear from the individuals who our decisions directly affect. Um, so I think it's a pleasure for us to hear from you. I know it takes, um, getting over some nervousness at times to, to speak, uh, before us, but, you know, on behalf of all of us, I believe we appreciate you all, uh, for coming out. I, I think this, um, the spirit of what was said today, um, those that are here really believe in this project, they believe in this school, but they also not only believe in the school, but also the community that surrounds it. I, I do feel that these types of projects help to not only build the infrastructure of the education we're providing as a city, but also helping to improve the neighborhoods in which our schools are in. So I just want to commend you all for coming out, and I, I believe the presentation that we had, uh, was very clear and very detailed, and, um, we've had sufficient time to review it, so I, I just wanted to put that into the record. Thank you all.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of, uh, passing unfinished business, item number four, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it, the motion carries, and unfinished business, number four is approved. Uh, with that, Alderman Martinez-McCarthy, is there a motion to return to the regular order of business?
Some will.
Alderwoman Weaver.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we return to our regular order of business. Uh, with that, we will, uh, split up into committees, we will start with, uh, finance.
I call to order the Finance Committee. Item number 14, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a 2024 to 2025 Waterbury Hospital Bankruptcy Tax Dispense List, as submitted by Frank Caruso Jr., Revenue Collection Manager. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Alderman Alsop.
I'd just like to know, I, I know the explanation was that, you know, we're not going to let them off the hook, but I want to know what, what the strategy is behind this, and what the reason is behind doing this versus waiting for court and bankruptcy, because Prospect is different than the people who own the property, so Prospect Bankruptcy is not a part of what they owe us.
Well, we're doing it, we'd like to do it with the end of the fiscal year coming to clean up the books and get it off, because if the bankruptcy is really pushing it, like how, how much we're really going to collect with, uh, with the bankruptcy?
The property owners are in the bankruptcy also? That's the part I, I didn't, I didn't hear that before, maybe I'm missing something.
So, it's a complicated process, because the hospital is in bankruptcy, Prospect.
Great.
Land is owned by the REI, the Real Estate Investment Holding Company. However, obviously, well, I shouldn't say obviously, but even within the bankruptcy proceeding, it's accepted that in order to sell the hospitals in any meaningful way, you have to tie the land back to the hospital. So, uh, the holding company is agreed, they've come to terms with Prospect, with the bankruptcy court, with the trustee, as to how they're going to handle that, and what they're going to do with it. So the, the property will be part of the ultimate sale, it will be handled through the bankruptcy court, and therefore, that will determine what funds are available to pay off that portion of it, and then what, through that amount, will be available through the bankruptcy. It's, it's, I'm not a bankruptcy lawyer, so I'm not going to do it justice and try and explain it fully, but they have tied it back together, so they're not separate proceedings at this point.
Are they having prob, they haven't gotten their money from Prospect either?
Say that again?
The holding company that owns the property doesn't...
Prospect, under the lease, this is the other piece that complicates it, under the lease, Prospect has obligated itself to make the payments, the tax payments to the city. So between those two parties, Prospect is the obligated party to pay as, they're the party that's in bankruptcy. But clearly, you've got to tie it all back together to make this work. This is why these bankruptcies take forever to get through and cost a fortune to move their, their way through the courts, but they are all tied together, and that ultimately will have an impact on how this plays out. So, yeah, they haven't been paid the tax amount yet on that money. Um, you know, if we're, the, the piece that is further complicating all this, as you all this, as you know, I, I think I've mentioned this before, is the court has approved post-bankruptcy loans to the entity, on, the entity for an ongoing basis, so the hospitals can stay solvent, because clearly, that's important for two interests. One is that the bankruptcy asset has to remain viable, and that's, you know, the bankruptcy court. But the judge has also taken the position that she wants the hospitals to remain viable because of the critical role they play in providing health care within the town. So it's, it's kind of a mix. So there's money that's already been allocated to pay for ongoing operating costs. There's certain other things you've seen in the paper last week, the approval for certain bonuses for top officials at Prospect, because even the unions and the creditors committee have not opposed that, because they think it's important to keep the hospitals viable. At this point, you know, I, I can't tell you who they are, because I don't know. There are four interested bidders. It looks like this is moving forward. They're very viable bidders. And there are now both the bankruptcy trustee and the State Health Department have monitors in the hospital observing on an ongoing basis. And we have a call once every two weeks with those state officials and other local officials in the other affected towns and state reps and senators. But the reports that we're getting from both sets of monitors is that at the current time, the hospitals are operating well. They're doing a good job. There's no, you know, they have staffing issues like all hospitals do. They're not always at 100%, but they're much better than they were. They're getting their supplies and they're providing services. So all the things they're doing seem to be working.
But the obligation to, to, to the City of Waterbury for taxes is by the land owner?
Ultimately, it goes back to the land owner.
So?
But it's all, all of this is complicated by the agreement they have, the presence of the bankruptcy court, and the fact that the court has, has been working out the relationship between the land trust and the hospitals, because they've all acknowledged that any sale of the hospital has to include a sale of the underlying real estate. No one is going to buy the hospital as an ongoing entity if they have to continue that relationship with the holding company. That's just not a viable solution to all of this. And that's been, that's being dealt with through the bankruptcy court. So while you're, you're right in a very technical sense that the landowners owe us the taxes, it's not that simple, because it's in bankruptcy court at this moment.
So they can effectively, when this is all worked out, they can sell their property, and it's Prospect that has to pay us for the taxes? And they can get as much as they want for that property?
No, the property's going to be sold as part of the bankruptcy. It, it'll be part of what the, the bidders for the hospital are going to buy the ongoing entity of Waterbury Hospital, plus the underlying property. The trust has agreed to sell the property as part of the sale of the assets in the bankruptcy court. So I know, it's, it's head scratching, trust me.
Yeah, I mean, if, if I'm selling my house and I owe taxes, it doesn't matter who's buying it or how it's being bought. I gotta pay the taxes.
You don't have a separate entity operating out of your house that's regular.
I work on that now, too.
That's gone bankrupt.
Hindsight is 2020.
In the midst of this, of this mess. So, you know, we'll see where, we'll see where that goes. But that's kind of where it is. It is very likely, I will be honest with you, it is very likely that we are not going to get 100% of our taxes. I'm hoping we get something out of it. We'll see where that goes. And as you may also know, there's a tax, there's an appeal of the assessment pending that is scheduled, was scheduled for trial this month. There's ongoing negotiations over discovery, and it's very likely that that issue will get pushed off a little bit further. So that appeal will also affect what, amount of taxes are technically owed in the first instance. So that's ongoing.
Is there further discussion? Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, just a question again, just for the clarity of the public. This is not necessarily to, for lack of a better phrase, let them off the hook.
Correct.
Also, for accounting practices and for the purpose of our accounting records as a city.
Typically, what you carry on the books, there's, I don't want to say there's, you know, you're still working to collect it. Here, we're out, it's out of our control at this point. There's nothing we can do to get those taxes until the bankruptcy court resolves it. So the idea of this is to take it off as a receivable, because it's not a realistic receivable at this point. And we know at some point, we're going to get something, but it's not going to relate to the numbers that we're showing on the books. That's where the issue lies, as it stands right now. So that's the reason for doing it. But as you know, when we've done these suspensions in the past, that doesn't preclude us from, you know, collecting it at some point.
Pursuing.
And we will when the bankruptcy court finally rules. But, you know, short of an appeal of that, it's going to be whatever the court judge says. They have great discretion in bankruptcy court.
Thank you. Thank you.
Further discussion? Alderman Nijame?
Thank you for recognizing me. Curiosity question. The two entities, they're not somehow tied to each other, where there's like a parent company, where they divided and say, hey, this company is going to do the land part, just in case, and this part?
They, they created for their own purposes, the separate land trust, the REI.
So they did?
They did create the land company. It's, they're not parent relationships, but what happened is they created the land company, sold the underlying property to the, the company, took cash out of that, shared it with the Prospect. I mean, it's a scam. Don't get me wrong. What they did, what Prospect did is hugely improper, which is why we're here. I don't, I don't mean to in any way imply that this is a good deal, but that's what they did. And so at this point, the, 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 the trust owns the property. The hospitals were paying rent to them on a regular basis.
So it's kind of like paying yourself rent?
Yes, if, depending on who controls it. I haven't gone into the details of who controls which, but effectively, they were working together to make this, this happen to, get the, that's the way that, one of the ways they were taking cash out of the deal.
And doing that X amount of years ago, and I'm not sure if they're doing it to other properties and hospitals and auto businesses, you know, kind of separate the two. So if the business goes under, they can at least still own the land and operate the land.
Yeah, I mean, there, there, you, you know, in real estate, there's reasons to set up separate companies and other things to protect yourself against. That's not what this was. This was done to, to scyphon cash out of the ongoing, the hospital operations in a way that probably got beneath the record.
So the taxes owed is obviously on the hospital and the equipment.
There's two kinds, there, there are two pieces to the taxes, by the way. There's the property tax.
And then the land.
And then there's the personal property tax. And the personal property tax is still with Prospect. The real property tax is with the Prospect Holdings, whatever that company is.
REI. Are they, are they paying at least that part, or they're just not paying anything?
We haven't gotten any taxes from anybody throughout in the last year and a half. So, yeah.
Basically, from neither company?
Either one. They both owe us taxes. The number owed to us from, is the combination of all the taxes owed to the hospital. Because don't forget, from our perspective, the entity we're, we've been dealing with is Prospect, because they're obligated by the lease to pay the taxes. So that's how this has been, been working, right? And now they're not paying that. So.
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you. I just wanted to be clear on that.
Is there further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Are there any abstentions? The motion passes. The Standing Committee, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $28,005.96 as submitted by Frank A. Caruso Jr., CCMC Revenue Collection Manager. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve tax refunds as submitted.
And a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstention? The motion passes.
No problem.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
I call to order the Intergovernmental Committee meeting, starting with item number three. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a construction contract under RFP number 8348 for Seventy Pine Street replacement. The contract value is $198,000, which includes a $78,000 allowance, as submitted by Emily Zhao, Project Engineer. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Clerical question, if Alderman Rodriguez is not
Oh.
present.
Yeah, stand by one second. Okay.
I just realized. Sorry that he wasn't here. I think he's holding court outside.
So recess one second.
Yeah, no worries.
Okay, return to business.
So Alderman Rodriguez, we have a vote on item number three. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Thank you. Item number four, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a professional services agreement under RFP 8429 for a five-year term and in the not-to-exceed amount of $250,000 with David Lieber Consulting LLC for Cisco Network Engineering Services, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I should say that this item and the other items from the Board of Ed were approved at their last meeting. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number five, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a professional services agreement under RFP 8436 with the Network LLC for a three-year and in the not-to-exceed amount of $2,216,025 to provide certified nursing assistant services, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez.
Good evening, Wendy Johns, Director of People's Services.
How you doing? Thank you for coming. And you're probably going to answer both, those two items in one shot. So we are asking for $2.2 million for the certified nursing for three years. Is that a group of nurses that we bring in, or how that's going to work?
So these are providing for students that have individualized education plans. And these are specific to students that have special education services within our schools. And these supplement what we're already providing within our schools, providing additional services. And these are paid with the IDA grant. So these are not coming from city funds.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number six, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a professional services agreement under RFP 8454 for a three-year period and in the not-to-exceed amount of $2,100,000 with Capital Region Education Council Resource Group for school psychology services for students, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion on item number six? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number seven, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve Amendment Two to the Agreement with American School for the Death for Special Education Services for Students, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number eight, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the following three resolutions, which will allow the Board of Education to submit a school construction grant application to the Department of Administrative Services for the state's consideration, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Resolution one, resolve that the Board of Aldermen authorizes the Waterbury Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant from the, for the proposed Roberto Clemente International Dual Language School Expansion Project. Resolution two, resolve that the following members are hereby established as the Building Committee with regard to the proposed Roberto Clemente International Dual Language School Expansion Project, Latoya Ireland, Elizabeth Brown, Jacqueline Jackson, Rocco Orso, and Melissa Serrano Adorno. Resolution three, resolve that the Board of Aldermen authorizes at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the proposed Roberto Clemente International Dual Language School, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number nine, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a subcontractor agreement with Child Health and Development Institute of Connecticut, Inc., for a three-year period and at, and at no cost to provide professional development activities to increase awareness and knowledge around behavioral health, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 10, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a construction contract for, under RFP number 8349 for the North End Recreation Roof Replacement, the contract value 300, of 432,940, which includes a $95,000 allowance, and is funded through state LOCIP, as submitted by Emily Zhao, Project Engineer. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion on item number 10? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 11, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a construction contract under RFP number 8355 for Washington Park House Roof Replacement. The contract value is $201,255, with $45,000 allowances, and is funded through the state LOCIP, as submitted by Emily Zhao, Project Engineer. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 12, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a contract for one exchange cooling tower replacement between the City of Waterbury and Tucker Mechanical, Inc., under RFP number 8459, in the amount of $490,000, as submitted by David Simpson, Director of Public Works. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez.
David Simpson, Director of Public Works.
Thank you for coming, David. My question is, that $490,000 for that exchange, is that from the $6 million that was approved for the, separate from the money that it was approved for the one exchange, that $6 million?
Good evening, Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. The funding for this contract is coming out of the available proceeds from the remaining grant that was provided by the state. So the, the balance of the 2.5 million is being worked down through various contracts that are being brought before this board. And to the extent that you'll ask the same question with forthcoming contracts, we'll identify whether it's funded out of the balance of the grant, or whether it'll be out of the bond authorization.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Any further discussion on item number 12? Thank you. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 15, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a district participation agreement with Capital Region Education Council at no cost to participate in an evaluative study of the Connecticut Welcoming Schools Initiative, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 16, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a student intern affiliation agreement with University of Pennsylvania Graduate School of Education at no cost to provide school counseling, field practicums, and internships, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 17, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve Amendment One to the Services Agreement with All-Star Transportation LLC for Student Bus Transportation Services slash Special Education Bus Transportation Services. This amendment will include the addition of the district's Magnet School, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion on item number 17? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 18, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve Amendment to the 2023 ARPA Auto Theft and Violence Grant Agreement, extending the performance end date to June 30, 2026, as submitted by extending the performance end date to June 30, 2026, as submitted by Lieutenant Andrea DiAgostino, Waterbury Police Department. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion on item number eighteen? Alderman Rodriguez.
How you doing?
Good evening.
Good evening. How is this project going so far? And I've seen a lot of improvements to it. In your own opinion, how this project is moving along?
It's moving along very well. Our numbers, our stats are coming along a lot.
Have we seen a lot of out-of-state license being stopped and searched for? Or how's that doing so far?
That would not be a part of this grant. This is for auto theft. That would actually probably be done by Sergeant Reddian when he gets up for his.
Okay. No problem.
Enforcement.
No, no problem. Thank you for what you guys are doing.
Are you all side Alderman Rodriguez?
Yep.
Any further discussion on item number eighteen? Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number nineteen. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a Connecticut grant for the municipal police department for aggressive enforcement of speed and aggressive driving laws with the Department of Transportation providing reimbursement as submitted by Robert T. Davis, Deputy Chief, Waterbury Police Department. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez.
Brian Reddian, Waterbury Police Department.
Thank you for coming. I don't know if you heard the question, but how are we doing with the out-of-state license in the city?
The state of Connecticut changed that law. We no longer can send these people to court. So, it's just a simple infraction. It's hard for us to actually enforce that. We can't pull someone over just simply because they have an out-of-state plate. So, there's a little bit of investigation that has to be involved. And it's not, you know, we can't just pull someone over because they have a New York plate in their car. So, we don't enforce that often, but when we do, it's just a simple ticket versus before. It used to be a go-to-court and explain why you haven't changed your plate.
Yeah, that was my question about after that. So, if you stop someone and ask for how long they have been with that plate, and since I understand that you have to be a resident after three months, I think it is, you have to change your plate for the state?
Mm-hmm.
So, we cannot do that no more?
We can't pull someone over simply because they have an out-of-state plate. No.
Okay. Thank you. And that was something that passed in the state.
That was a couple of years ago that changed, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Everything else has been good in speeding, stuff like that.
Yeah, we're doing what we can to try to combat the issues, yes.
And with the cameras being put in and some lights, is that effective?
So, that's still in process. We haven't gotten that deployed yet.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any further discussion on item number nineteen? Thank you so much. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number twenty. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a $175,000 grant from the U.S. Department of Justice to develop and implement Waterbury Streetwise Solutions Violent Crime Prevention through Conflict Resolution and De-escalation, aimed at risk individuals to teach conflict resolution and de-escalation skills, as submitted by Andrea DiAgostino, Lieutenant, Waterbury Police Department. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion on item number twenty? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. That's all the business for the Intergovernmental Committee. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned.
Okay. And with that, we return to the regular order of business. The following items are on a consent calendar. Item number one and items number one and item number two are receiving place on files. Item three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11 are all on consent to approve. Item 12 is on consent to approve. Item 13 is receiving place on file. Items 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20 are on consent to approve. Unfinished business items number one, number three, and number four are on consent to approve. Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy, is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Alderwoman Weaver?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Any additions or deletions? Alderman Alcev.
I'd like to have item number 13 and number 17 taken off for discussion.
Items number 13, 17.
Correct.
I would assume you want unfinished business number three also?
If I missed it, let me check again. Sorry.
You voted no on the roll call on that one?
Yes, then take it off, please.
Okay. Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy, the motion on the floor now is to approve the consent calendar as read minus items number 13, 17, and unfinished business number three. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve as read.
Alderwoman Martinez. Alderwoman Weaver?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of reading the consent calendar, approving the consent calendar as read, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries and the consent calendar is approved.
With respect to item number 13, the chair would recognize Alderman Tajil Dean. Excuse me. 13 is a.
The place on file.
Sorry. Alderman Alcev, 13 is a receiving place on file.
Yes, I think the.
It is.
Am I recognized? No, I don't want to catch up later. Recognize me?
Alderman Alcev, go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody involved for finally getting the information to me. And it's quite interesting. I think the citizens of Waterbury really need to know what's going on. Because we're spending a lot of money on buildings that are sitting there storing air. And that's basically what they're doing. They're storing air and waiting to fall down around us. We did get a memo saying that there's some progress made on the St. Mary's properties. But it's cost us, by going by the numbers, just using the last 10 months, which is what we got numbers for, for St. Mary's, the last three years have cost us $228,000 to have that building sit there and give us the bragging rights to say that we own that decrepit.
Alderman Alcev, I'm just gonna interrupt you. We'll save this for the Good Order, okay? Because we don't discuss receiving place on files normally.
We don't get to make a comment?
Our normal business, we don't discuss them, no. We just make note of them that we've received them, and that's all. So, I'll give you plenty of time for the Good Order if you want to discuss this, but.
What? You're the boss. You know, you do what you want.
All right. So, let's, okay, with respect to item number 17, the chair would recognize Alderman Tajil Dean, the chair of the Intergovernmental Committee.
Item number 17. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve Amendment One to the Services Agreement with All-Star Transportation, LLC for Student Bus Transportation Services/Special Education Bus Transportation Services. This amendment will include the addition of the district's Magnet School as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Motion made by Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy, seconded by Alderwoman Weaver. Oh, sorry. Excuse me. Motion made by Alderwoman Weaver, seconded by Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy. Discussion. Alderman Alcev.
Yes. I'm having a little problem with this because, as you may remember, I was on the board when we started this whole Magnet School stuff. And one of the things that was mandatory was that the sending towns were going to be responsible for all transportation costs. And now, we're being told we have to take the cost on because they don't want to anymore. That's sort of like Watertown town, is they don't want to pay for the water. There was an agreement in the beginning of these schools when they were put together that the transportation costs would all be from the home town. So, what's changing here?
Thank you. Darren Schwartz, Superintendent of Public Schools. The agreements that were agreed to approximately 20 years ago gave towns a clause that with one year's notice, they could back out of that transportation, which we did receive from Thomaston over a year ago.
I didn't hear the last part of your statement.
We received communication from Thomaston over a year ago that they were going to exercise that right in the agreement to back out of the transportation.
And what is the benefit that the city of Waterbury sees or the Education Department of the city of Waterbury sees in going out and picking these kids up and bringing them to our schools now that the agreements aren't there anymore?
So, there's a few pieces that help us make that decision. I'll let Mr. Albini talk more about the specifics. So, if we decide to bus it, provides a couple of options. Number one, there is a reimbursement for the State Department to be able to get a grant, to be able to pick students up. That's $1,300 per student that we would receive to pick up the students from outside the district. If we choose not to transport the students from outside the district, many of the parents have communicated to us, they would no longer be able to send their kids to our schools, which would then force us to actually reduce the number of Waterbury kids that would be able to go to our Magnet Schools. We have to keep a 70%, 30% calculation with our Magnet Schools. 70% must come from Waterbury. 30% must come from without the district. Many of our.
Question when you're saying that, isn't that part of the same agreement that said that the towns were going to send and pay for the transportation?
No, that's a law. That's the State Department. That's not with the sending towns.
It wasn't all part of the same.
No, that's an agreement with the State Department of Education that when you start a Magnet School, you have to abide by having a 70-30 split. Most of our schools are writing that 30% marker within a dozen students. We're not at 35, 40%. We're right around 30. In fact, we had to write a plan last year because we dipped one student under the 30%. And the State Department made us write a comprehensive plan of what we were going to do to support getting more suburban students to attend our Magnet Schools. If we have less suburban students attending our Magnet School, that means we're going to have to reduce the number of Waterbury students attending our Magnet School to keep the 70-30 split. So, not only do we receive $1,300 per student to be able to pick them up, we've estimated that this would cost us. We originally thought it was $30,000, but with the price of diesel that we have, it's going to cost us closer to $20,000 total after we receive the grant to be able to run this transportation. The good news is, is that we have, is it, Nick, is it 112 students? We have 115 students coming from the three towns that did back out. Now, Plymouth and Terryville did back out. They did not give us the one-year heads-up, but they will not be sending buses. And so, Corporation Council is aware of that, and they'll be having further conversations about what to do about Plymouth and Terryville. So, between the two towns, Plymouth-Terryville being one and Thomaston being the other, 115 students do come to our schools from those towns. Every time one of those students comes to our school, we receive money from the State Department. That money equals close to $750,000. So, every time a Plymouth-Terryville student comes in or a Thomaston student comes in, we receive about $750,000 total to be able to run the Magnet Schools. That pays for teachers. That pays for all the arts programs. That pays for all the extracurriculars. That approximately $750,000 for each student would go away, obviously, if those students don't come to our schools. So, the price tag of $20,000 to receive the $750,000 we get for those students coming to our school seemed like a no-brainer to us.
A reasonable explanation. I just didn't know there was separate rules. You know, we approved that it was a package, and they're going to pay the transportation. Everything's okay.
Yeah, well, you know, Alderman, it's a good point. You know, we weren't happy with their back out of the agreement. We think as a community, not just the Waterbury community, but the greater community, that it's good for students to experience not just our Magnet Schools, which are some of the best of state, but it also diversifies the populations of the towns that surround Waterbury and Waterbury itself. And so, the ethos behind a Magnet School is really to diversify the population and to be able to provide high-quality education. And, you know, it's unfortunate these towns and these boards of educations outside of Waterbury have decided to stop transportation for their residents. But we see it in terms of a fiscal decision, it's an easy one for us. You know, it's just unfortunate that the towns aren't supporting their residents to come to our schools.
We can look forward to the other towns cashing on.
Well, and we know that. And we, to be quite honest, when you speak to the Magnet Office at the State Department, we're one of the last cities that still have a lot of the towns paying for their own agreements. Other larger cities have already had to take on that piece. But hopefully incrementally, that would happen, not all at once.
Is there an end to the Magnet School grants? I know there was looking at 20 years when we first started.
So, the agreements between the other towns are evergreen according to the attorneys I talked to. So, there's no necessarily end date of our agreements with other towns unless they exercise an option.
I mean, the state also.
With the State Department, it all comes down to the funding that they provide us on a biannual basis. So, if they continue to fund it, there's no end in sight.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving item number 17, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries and item 17 is approved. With respect to unfinished business item number three, to request for approval of a lease agreement with Nogatuck Valley Council of Governments for one exchange place units 6A and 6B. Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderwoman Weaver?
Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Alcev.
I'm going to stand by the fact that this is severely underpriced as far as I'm concerned. You know, people want to say that downtown is $12 square foot and stuff. This is going to be a newly renovated, brand-new, up-to-date building. It's not one of the 1884 buildings sitting there that needs everything. This is going to be, by virtue of what we've been told before, completely brand-new. So, even if the $12 is the perfect number for the average downtown, we still are giving somebody a brand-new office at a significant discount as far as I'm concerned. So, there's no way I could support this.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none. Let's do a roll call vote, please.
Nope.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, the ayes have it. The motion carries and unfinished business item number three is approved. With respect to the standing committee, the chair would recognize Alderman Salvio, the chair of the Finance Committee.
Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $28,596 as submitted by Frank A. Caruso, Jr., CCMC Revenue Collection Manager. We have a.
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Mosley, seconded by Alderman Rinaldi. Any discussion?
I don't have that in front of me right now. Why?
Here.
What was that? That was the tax refunds, correct?
Standing committee.
The standing committee tax refunds.
I don't remember voting no for that. I'm sorry. I voted. Yeah, I voted yes on that.
You voted for that, yeah.
Yeah, you confused me when you said.
It's just the tax refunds at the end of the meeting every time. Standing committee. You good?
I'm fine with it. Yeah, I'm fine with it. That's all right. You confused me. I didn't have the computer on that page.
No problem. All those in favor of approving the refunds, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no? Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and the refunds are approved. That is our business for the evening. Anything for the good of the order? Let me start off by saying, Alderman Alsop, I misspoke. The item 20 was sent on Friday, not on Wednesday, but it was sent on Friday, so just, just to let you know.
I was going to bring that up again, but...
Okay, Alderman Mosley.
Didn't want to say it out loud.
No, Alderman Mosley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to ask, we can just keep former State Senator and Chair of the Buckle Hill Neighborhood Association, Bob Dorr, in our prayers? He's had some health challenges recently, so if we can just all keep him in our prayers and hope for a speedy recovery.
Thank you. Alderman Alsop, do you want to speak or no?
Yes. I think it's important that the taxpayers of City of Waterbury understand what's going on here, and I'm not trying to make excuses or criticizing at this point. I'm just trying to point out the fact that we are not real estate savvy. St. Mary's Hospital has cost us over $228,000 since we bought it, to look at it. We heat it, we have electricity, we have water going through it, we provide security, we have to have insurance to protect our investment. But it's a lot of money for something, which means at this point, we probably have to get at least $1,300,000 to, yeah, $1,300,000 just to break even when we sell it. So I'm interested to see what's going on when this sale goes through. And then we get to Sacred Heart. Lot of money there, too. Oh, and I might want to say that I did drive by St. Mary's, and we probably wouldn't have spent so much oil if some of the windows that were open had been closed at some point. But there are open windows on the top floors, and I got to believe that they acted as a chimney for some of the oil. So we might, if we get stuck with it for another winter, let's close the windows this time. Sacred Heart, I don't know what we're going to do with this, because $2,169 is what we rent the convent for. When I see people paying $1,600, $1,800, $1,900 for condos, for a third-floor, second-floor apartment in a three-family house, $2,169 is pretty cheap for taking over a whole building. And we're the new owners. We should have been able to set something up differently. And again, that was something that we had to do last year. We had to get it done. It's in a hurry. Let's do it. And what do we wind up with? A year, or more than a year, of extra cost to the city. Let's get rid of this thing. That is definitely a building, the church is in horrible shape, the school is in bad shape, the rectory isn't too bad, but it's not good. Let's just dump them off. If it's such a good deal, there's bound to be some greedy little developer from Ethiopia or Oklahoma or someplace else that comes into this town like they do and take over something. Let them take it over. We don't want it anymore. They'll run it to the ground, take all the money that they want, and leave it anyways. And we'll get it for nothing in about 10 years when it does collapse. Let's get rid of it. Sell it today, tomorrow. Let's get rid of it. It's not worth us spending the money that we are spending on this building. So, you know, now I see the cost, and I'm even more disgusted at the fact that we got it sitting there, doing what it's doing. And I, I gotta believe that this, this, you know, these are most of the costs, but at some point in time, somebody has to go up and plow it. Somebody has to do the sidewalks. That's not included here. There's, there's a lot of cost to keeping these derelict buildings sitting there. And quite honestly, if you talk to the people in the neighborhood, they don't want it like that. Fix it or knock it down. An empty lot is much better than what you've got. And it is going to be a matter of time before that school, that church, has a major problem with the water penetration that's happening in the walls and stuff. I really don't want to see what happened in New London. The thing just crumbles one day. But that's what the damage in it, that's what the water penetration in the wall is doing. That's what's coming up. Chances are, it won't happen in the warm weather. It's going to happen in the cold weather, when it freezes, thaws, freezes again, and then falls down like it did in New London. Let's get rid of this stuff. Either that, get off our butts and get something done with it. It's either going to be fixed or not. It was a dire need to have this thing, and now it's sitting there. So I'm not happy about it. I think the citizens of Waterbury need to know about it. And let's hear from everybody. I shouldn't be the only one saying this. Everybody here has to be responsible to the taxpayers. It happens to be in my district, and people call me and complain about it, and they know I got a big mouth, and I bring it out, so they talk to me about it. It's got to go. It's got to go one way or the other. One way or the other. Thank you. I've said...
Thank, thank you. Alderman Mosley.
Yeah, Mr. President, I just wanted to, you know, ask our body if we can just be considerate and sensitive, especially when referring to people and their cultures and their places of origin, countries of origin. If we can just be respectful of that. Some of the comments that were made, in my opinion, were a little bit insensitive, so if we could just be mindful of that as a body. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Hearing none. Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy.
Motion to adjourn.
Alderwoman Weaver?
Second.
Motion made in second. We are adjourned.